Okay, this meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board has come to order. Before we move to public comment, I'd like to propose a change in the order because there are a number of people here for specific purposes and whether we could change the order to have, after the approval of the minutes, have a non-meeting to discuss the strategies with respect to collective bargaining. And then after that, to move to the Confucius Institute to question that, because I think a number of people are here for both those issues, and then we can move forward with the announcements and commendations. Is that agreeable? Okay, so we'll do that. So, public comment?
I just want to introduce myself, and some of you saw us at the working group. Thank you for coming for the first meeting. And it was sort of decided at that time it might be nice to just come and say hello to the whole board and tell you who we are and what we're doing, and when we will come back to you, so we have a timeframe. There's a group of parents that are interested and educators in the district about talking about moving the middle school and high school times later. This conversation, as you know, actually started in 2010, 2011, when a letter went from actually teachers, counselors, nurses, and parents, kind of not in any official capacity, but in their personal capacities, asking that the district consider that. And the district did a lot of work, actually. In fact, that work is still there. They did public opinion surveys, they did community forums, they also actually came up with the actual pragmatic work, in other words, what would it take, what would the school day look like, so that has all been done. So I think a few things have changed since then, which made the conversation come back again, and I just wanted to highlight very briefly in a minute about what those are, and then also to tell you what the working group is going to be doing. So the first thing I think since 2010 that has changed is that the evidence for starting schools later has become basically a consensus among pediatricians and educators who work on these issues. So I would ask that, in the meantime, while the working group is meeting, but before we come back in March, to talk to you, that you would take the time as individuals to educate yourselves on the issue of impacts of later start times. And I think the easiest, it doesn't take a lot of time, we're not talking endless hours, the easiest source is the American Academy of Pediatrics and pediatricians, and they released a report in August 2014, which essentially concludes the following: "The substantial body of research has now demonstrated that delaying school start times is an effective countermeasure to chronic sleep loss and a wide range of benefits to students with regard to physical and mental health, safety, and academic achievement." And I think it's fair to say that every single person in this room has those goals for our kids, so this will come back to you in a different way. The working group is now going to start looking much more concretely at what are the alternatives. And the interesting thing is that there's not that many. There's a limited number, and they've been actually adopted successfully in a number of school districts across the country. So 48 states now have schools that have moved their start times later, and the U.S. Department of Education is now formally recommending that school districts actually do this. Arnie Duncan has been tweeting on it, so we're not the only ones who are thinking about this. So the working group has kind of been convened at the request of the board because of the letter that was sent to the summer. We have met the principals, actually, the people who are helping to organize it, of the middle school and high school, so Todd Allen and Jay Richard, and we're going to meet monthly for the next couple of months, and we're going to look at which alternatives have been done and try to assess the costs and benefits of those. In other words, how could they be adapted for our district? I think a couple of quick conclusions that the working group has already reached is that we're not unique. So the same concerns that we have have been articulated by a number of districts. Those concerns have been met in many ways, proactively, before those policies went into place. So we'll be trying to come back to you and do some of the work in advance for you, saying, here's some alternatives that might work for us, here's the problems that we know will exist with those alternatives, here's some of the solutions, and here's how much, we won't know concretely how much it would cost until the district, of course, does more work, but we will try to come back to you the first week of March as a group. We have a really eclectic group of people who have volunteered. The group is open, anyone here who would like to volunteer and want to join us, we very much appreciate it. We meet tomorrow in the same building at 7:30 PM for our second meeting. So, again, it's open, we want it as inclusive as possible. The more input we have from parents and educators and teachers, the better off we'll be. So, thank you very much.
Before you leave the microphone, could you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jeanie Sowers, and I am a parent of one child in the district who will not particularly probably even see this coming, right, and my other life. I'm really glad not to have some meetings, because I'm going to be on duty, so thank you.
Thank you, Jeanie.
Thank you.
Other public comment? Hearing none? Okay. Sorry. Okay?
Hi there. We're from the Oyster River Drama Club. I'm Caitlin Lacher, I'm a senior this year.
Alana Bagden, also a senior.
This is Adam Hookway, Jared Bernier, and Sarah Coro, they are sophomores this year. We are from, like I said, the Oyster River Drama Department, and we are in the fall play this year, Almost Maine. We, Almost Maine contains nine interlocking love stories, all happening in the same far northern Maine town on the same moonless night.
The short, starry-eyed vignettes, which usually focus on making literal, the idioms of love, grow out of audition pieces that the playwright and actor Jean Cariani wrote for himself. They alternate beautiful, evocative prose with stutteringly awkward exchanges and often very funny sight gags.
There is a literal falling in love bit that involves repeated uncontrollable, weak-kneed crashes to the floor. There's a heart turned to stone bit in which a repairman promises to mend a shattered heart clattering around in a sandwich bag. The show's best moments involve unsolicited and sometimes unanswered confessions of love when performers' faces reflect what dialogue cannot. That moment when a broad smile initially powered by irrepressible joy transitions into one held up instead by the police of pride and insecurity.
Play is being presented at the Oyster River High School Auditorium at 7:00 PM this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, the 20th through the 22nd. Tickets are $5 for students and $7 for adults.
It's going to be an amazing play. We have an amazing cast of 19. We are so excited and so fortunate to be putting on the show. It's family-friendly, all are welcome, just really all come and see it. It helps us not only afford to keep doing shows, but will later lead up to the musical, and you can look forward to more shows this year with the student-written murder mystery, the one-act play that we put on, and our spring musical. So, thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there other public comment? Okay, could we have a motion to approve the November 5 regular minutes? Denise?
Sure. I motion to approve the November 5 regular minutes.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Al. Are there corrections, changes? Maria?
I just have questions about the, I didn't think I voted for, the discussion of the warrant article. That I thought we were moving forward, proposed article below, not below, but to move it into discussion with the community, because if I had known that I was voting on anything that said dollar XXXX, I wouldn't have voted for it, because I'm kind of picky about money when it comes over, over a million. So...
I remember the discussion.
And that was my, my impression that we had skipped that language of what that we voted to, for the staff to be able to go forward, and that we were behind it.
So is there a change in the wording that would capture what you?
For me, it would be scratching that, the language of the XXX million dollars, that whole paragraph. To move forward with a proposed warrant article and to move it into discussion with the community.
Without the warrant article itself being part of the motion?
Right, because we're going to vote on that when we got the XXXs built in.
Could you just say, I don't mean to like wordsmith it, but just move forward with a warrant article? And move the discussion to the community, that way you don't have to, because otherwise the proposed one does have all the Xs in it.
Right, a proposed, yeah, okay.
Would that be?
A proposed.
Because we still will be voting later on the language of the warrant article.
Right, and especially the how many million dollars are we talking about?
Okay, could you read the change then?
It's going to sort of say Denise Day moved to move forward with a proposed warrant article and move it into discussion with the community.
Does that capture the sense of the meaning?
I think so.
Okay, so with that change, is that satisfactory?
And scratch the following paragraph.
Right, the next paragraph is completely deleted.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Is that, okay?
I'm just wondering what, maybe we talked about it, what the purpose and of our having the vote and discussing it at that meeting without that kind of language. I thought that this was kind of an impetus to start to get the process going with the understanding that we were going to eventually fill in the dollar figure and then have a chance to vote again when we saw what the dollar figure was. To me, it's superfluous.
Yeah, I specifically remember as well, having the conversation that Maria certainly didn't want to vote on anything that had an ambiguous amount of money, you know, or no specific amount of money, and that we decided that the reason for even needing this was so that we could give Todd and Corey the yes, the commitment of yes, we are going to put this on as a warrant article, but we're not willing to commit to what that warrant article is right now, because we're not comfortable. And I was among them as well, that did not want XXXs and something that was being voted on. So that's how I see the difference. But it was really that, yes, we were giving our commitment to putting a warrant article about the track on, but that we did not want to get as specific at this point as voting on the language.
Because we voted on language.
Right, once we have decided on a dollar amount, we'll vote right on the language and put it out there as an absolutely beautiful warrant article.
Is that satisfactory? Okay, with that change? I had a question about Dean Rubine's comment at the end. My memory was you wanted more explicit language in the minutes, not less, is that correct?
I like more language than less.
Okay, I think that, I think that the, in the minutes, you indicated you want less, right?
Oh, kept brief, yeah.
You just spelled my name wrong.
Okay, okay, okay. So, I think, I think in the minutes, that the very last comment, he's, he actually made the opposite point, right? Yeah, okay. So other changes? Hearing none? We approve the minutes with the changes that have been made? All in favor, please raise your hand.
I'd like to abstain if I wasn't here.
Okay, five in favor, one abstention, and Megan will not be here today, so the student rep will not be recorded for any vote.
Six.
Sorry?
Six in favor.
Six in favor, one abstention. Yeah, sorry. Okay. Could I have a motion to go into a non-meeting RSA 91-A:2 Roman numeral I, A, 1A, for the purpose of strategies with respect to collective bargaining? Moved by Kenny?
Yep, I move that we move into a non-meeting session under the legislation RSA 91-A2, Roman numeral 1, subscript A, to discuss the collective bargaining issue.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Al. It's a roll call vote.
Denise Day, aye. Sarah Varwell, aye.
Kenny Rotner, yes.
Holland, aye. Tom Newkirk, aye.
Charlie, aye.
All right, yes.
And the vote is seven to nothing to go into non-public, so we'll move to...
Just before we leave, just to explain to the audience so they know what we're doing, non-public is a vehicle for the board to discuss...
Non-meeting.
Non-meeting, non-meeting is a vehicle for the board to discuss collective bargaining agreements, and so in order to do that, they need to do that outside the public eye so they can talk about the specifics. Then they come back in public and do any vote related to that discussion.
Sue?
Do we have to vote?
We have to vote to come back in?
Yep.
So I moved that way.
Not according to the state.
Not according to the state. We always have.
Okay.
But if you look at the guidelines, you're in a side you're blue folder.
My little cheat sheet. No vote is needed to return to public meeting.
Okay. So, before we have a motion to approve the agreement that has been tentatively negotiated, I was wondering, Sue, if you could just come and let, so everybody can know kind of the major features of the agreement, would you do that?
So, the outcome of negotiations, a three-year agreement for the years 15, 16, 16, 17, and 17, 18. Change in the health plan, the co-pay is now the same as all of our other units, the 10, 20, 45 co-pay. We equalized the benefits for both the paras and the food service, food service a part of this unit too, so we gave them the same holidays and the same leave days, so they're both the same now. Went through the contract and adjusted some of the language that was no longer relevant. Then in terms of salary, and looking at both salary schedules, there needed to be some adjustments made, so the steps were at the same progression, so they were kind of unequal in some places, so I, we reneged those so that they were all somewhat equal, added three steps to each of them, so they now have 10 steps, and then gave the existing employees two steps, because in the last contract, they were not given a step in any of the years, actually, and they were given just two increments over the course of three years, a 25 cent, a 35 cent. So we gave them two steps for the existing employees. And then there were some revisions in the language for vacancies and recall procedures due to reduction in force.
Okay. And the total cost for year one would be $135,624, for year two, $121,343, and year three, $84,600. So, could we have a motion to approve this negotiated agreement? Al?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Orpass agreement.
Moved by Al, seconded by Kenny. Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, motion passes. This will appear as a warrant article, though.
And just again to inform the Orpass members who are here, the next step in this is the voters would vote on the school budget, and one of the warrant articles will be this negotiated agreement. So tonight, the board's approved it, essentially recommending it to the community, and the community has to accept it in March. So, thank you for being here.
And thank you for all the work that you do. Okay. We move to the Confucius Institute. I don't know if there's a presentation on this, or...
Yeah, we have a couple of presenters.
Okay.
Good to see you again. I'm UC Terrell. I live in Durham, first grader at Mohermit now and pre-K. When we came to you in June, the group of parents had proposed an after-school program that would be run by the Confucius Institute for elementary-age children, and you, at the time in June, approved the concept of the program, approved Dr. Morse to go ahead with a visa to bring a teacher from China, and to hear more details when the time was right. So, this is an update, and you also see the more detailed proposal that we've been able to pull together. There are the other parents behind me, I told them that we didn't need to come tonight because they had already shown their support, but that it still is a strong and active group. I'm also pleased to introduce you to Mr. Yiga Wong, who is the director at the Confucius Institute at UNH, and also Mrs. Ying Ying Chen, who is our teacher, who has come from China to work with us. And Yiga and Mrs. Chen are available to answer any questions as well.
Quick.
So...
Behind the [inaudible].
So, just a quick recap of the program. Local parents wanted our children to be prepared for a global workforce, to increase our global citizenship. And it's interesting to note, even in the past week, President Obama and the, with the Chinese government, have agreed to extend the visa stays for exchange between the two countries. So it's, you know, it's, there's more and more interaction between these great powers, and we're, you know, we're pleased to have our children prepared to participate, and you know, not saying that everyone needs to, but you know, to have that choice within Oyster River, within our diverse community. And there's also certainly a strong Chinese component in the Oyster River community as well, and we were excited, as we started talking as a parent group, to strengthen those ties, so that, you know, there was a, more of a structure, an institutionalized structure for these intercultural exchanges within the community to happen. So, as you recall, the Confucius Institute is a program sponsored by the Chinese Department of Education, and partners with higher education institutions, colleges and universities across the world. And UNH has a Confucius Institute that, where teachers are working with college students. And Mrs. Chen, her visa allows her to work in the K through 12 setting. And so, the model here would be for the, starting in January or February, first through third graders from Mastway and Mohermit to bus to the middle school after school, where Mrs. Chen would, and UNH volunteers who speak Chinese would, you know, would give them an introduction to Chinese language and culture and some writing. We're particularly excited by this program because there would be a family component, so say, twice a month, the families would be able to come and also learn about, you know, what their children were learning, so that they could reinforce it and to improve our own knowledge of Chinese language and culture. There would also be select trips to Chinetowns or, you know, other experiential opportunities for the children. All this is funded by the Confucius Institute or through the Confucius Institute, and so there's very low cost to the district. Mrs. Chen's salary is also paid by the Chinese government. And so, there is a way to, as my understanding, and Dr. Morse can confirm here, is that the incremental costs would be around any special needs support, and the, you know, that would fit within the existing bus routes if we were, if the students were to choose to take those, the bus to the middle school. You know, the rest of the details you see in the proposal, I'm sure there'll be questions. We're hoping that the board will grant approval at this time, and we can go forward with the promotion, because we've heard a lot of informal interest about the program in the community, and it would be great to say, you know, it's really happening, to say, we've set aside a room at UNH on December 1st from 5:30 to 7:00, where, you know, would be provided and, you know, childcare would be provided in order to learn more about the program. And I think you'll find that some of the minor unresolved questions, we are eager to broaden the conversation to more families who want to participate, so that we can hear that full, you know, that all the perspectives of the families, instead of this small group making, you know, some of these decisions around the fringes of the program.
So, questions?
I just have a comment. I think it's, first of all, I know it's a lot of work that you guys put in to get this to go through, and it's just such a cool opportunity for the kids to have this come through, and I say this somewhere, I'm absolutely horrible at languages, but it's great to give everybody an opportunity, and I hope the program can really grow.
Thank you.
Sarah?
I'd also like to say, I was so wowed by the write-up of it and just the opportunities that it's going to provide for the students. I am very hopeful that those fringe conversations happen, because I know, just for my own family, two days a week after school, they would just not, that would not work well. But, I think there are so many ways that it sounds like it could, you know, you could have a one-day-a-week thing in addition or whatever, and I think, you know, I'm excited for as many ways as you can bring this to as many kids to Oyster River, because I think it sounds fabulous.
And just to expand, you know, the core model is for a two-day-a-week program to allow for that deep learning to happen. We felt that there's a gap in our community for that type of intensive program. If there is more interest or different types of interest, the Confucius Institute is certainly open to, you know, to providing different types of programming. There's been some conversation about a middle school program, and Yiga has really been so welcoming at wanting to work with the community, and Mrs. Chen is dedicated to Oyster River at this point. So, you know, if you or others in the community have other ideas, I know he would be open to that.
So, excuse me if this is in the material and I missed it, but when would you see kids starting to take Chinese lessons? When would it start?
So, good question. We want to do this right and not, you know, start in a way that leaves people behind or isn't thoughtful. So with that said, we think that our realistic timeline is to have an initial community meeting or a way to learn more information session on December 1st, and we would see then whether we've run up against the holiday season too much or not. If we feel we've had sufficient and accurate interest, that there not going to be a lot of other people who come later, then what we would do is we name for the early January or mid-January to have, say, two weeks of trial classes. And we think that it's important, before, you know, parents commit fully to this pretty intensive program that might be different from other types of after-school activities that they've experienced, to have a chance to, you know, to try before they buy. And then in late January or early February, then the classes would start in earnest, and there'd be more of a, you know, a cohort curriculum and expectations of regular participation. If we feel that, again, we've, we can't move as quickly as, and well as we want to through the holidays, then that might get pushed back to later February official start.
Yeah, thank you.
What if you have students that continue to be interested but need a slower pace, or do you have any accommodations for students moving at different, at different paces?
That's a great question. So, one reason that we are excited to partner with UNH is because, in addition to Mrs. Chen, there would be these three, and Yiga just explained now, that a fourth student has come forward with significant Chinese experience to be able to help volunteer in the program. So, my son in first grade, he's, by the end of the school day, he's ready to move around. There are other children who are ready to, you know, to sit at their desks and learn still. So we already are trying to think through some of the differentiated instruction of different ways to learn, recognizing that Mrs. Chen may be able to take one group, and the UNH students may be able to have a more active activity that's still including Chinese learning, but just in a different way. You know, to, we deliberately chose a smaller age range, one through three, so that we could differentiate in other ways, I guess, within that cohort. So, to students who are moving at different paces, I think the UNH capacity is, you know, is another great asset to that, because if, you know, if we're proceeding, you know, in these, in these four months till the end of the school year, and certainly in future years, we'll be able to break the groups out a bit more. We've also, you know, we've had conversations with heritage families or families that do speak Chinese at home, and I think, you know, we're starting this program more aimed for students who have, and families who have limited Chinese-speaking opportunities at home, but again, to the point of bringing together the Oyster River community in really powerful ways, there may be a way to, in future years, to offer more group programming to students who might have more of the natural spoken language at home but want additional supportive writing, for example. So we're, you know, to your answer, to your question, we are thinking about the, how to scale in a way that allows for this differentiation.
Just echoing what was said, I greatly appreciate all the work that you all put in and how organized that it is, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity that I think will be very successful. You mentioned 15 to 18 is maybe the size for that two-day startup. Is there a number beyond that that you would not be able to accommodate without moving to extra days? Have you, I'm just thinking of how you're going to make that decision of participation and how that will work.
I think it's a good question. We want to see, we want to gauge community demand, and it's connected to a number of other things. It's connected to the space that we have at the middle school, whether we also have access to a gym and that, you know, that makes sense to use as a spillover space, you know, with the, how we're going to engage the student volunteers. Also, you saw there, you know, there's just some question about transportation, if we have... If we have a 15-person van, for example, that'll, that'll be another practical consideration. But I think, you know, to me, the transportation is secondary to interest. And if we knew that, you know, 30 or 40 people wanted to be involved, you know, we would work really hard to find ways to accommodate that through additional, you know, a spillover day or, you know, the other variables that we have at our disposal. I know Yiga and Mrs. Chen are open to weekend programming or, or other pieces there too. I think what, one thing we want to avoid is, we're, we're very proud that this is a low-cost program accessible to families where both parents work. You know, that was important to me personally and to many of the other planners too. We don't want this to be seen as a, you know, as a, as a sort of, just a low-cost childcare option. We want to make sure that the families that are participating are really committed to this. So we'll try to make that clear throughout the promotion and, you know, that may constrain our numbers too in, in a good way because it'll be the, you know, the, the people who are really committed to it.
Right. And, and kind of related to that, just thinking of kids in grades one through three learning something as challenging as Chinese and thinking of how learning drops off in summer. And I know that UNH has a, a large Chinese student presence during the summer. Is there, and, and we've had some summer programs that have started up, especially this past summer. Any thought to making an opportunity for kids to spend some time during the summer as well and maybe not have that learning drop off for as many?
I think this is a great opportunity to introduce Yiga and also Yiga to you a bit about the StarTalk program.
All right, so now we're celebrating. I thank you, Yiga Wong. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. We're very excited. And Mrs. Chen as well. To answer you the question about the summer program, UNH has a very successful summer program. It's called StarTalk, Chinese camp. It has been ongoing for four years now. It's a, funded by US Department of Homeland Security. We've been successful of getting funding each year. And so it runs for two weeks in the summer. It's a very language-intensive program coupled with cultural programs. And then we kind of have the after, after, post-program activities as well. So, so the program will end somewhere around July 4th and parents will travel typically. And then when they come back, we have a gather, gathering in the fall. And then we usually include all of these children in our annual gala at UNH Johnson Theater. They would perform a few programs and then join in activities. For example, this year, the New Year Gala is going to be on February 19th in 2015. We're going to invite all of the StarTalk students to come back one more time in February before the New Year Gala and then participate in New, in New Year Gala. They're going to set up booths at Granite, Granite State Run to, to run different cultural activities and that'll be open to all and they will be active part of it. So it's, it's an ongoing program. Even if we had only two weeks had them in the summer, we don't just dump them. We, we keep them going, keep them engaged. So that's answer your partially, uh, the question about summer program. We do have one existing, very mature.
Uh, you have a question?
Oh yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, we always worry that when something's implemented that you guys will be tsunamied with so many people coming in. But I think in my mind, the most, and I'm sure it sounds like the way you've organized, the most important thing is that when you implement a program, that it's well done because this is going to pave the way for your future. I mean, it, it's always a great thing to have so many people show up, but it's better to have it that the program is really well-run because then you'll be able to grow into it in the future.
And I would just add to that, that we see this as, we're, we're hopeful that this is a pilot project or, or a, a, a proof of interest, a proof of concept for world languages in the schools, for additional languages in the early grades. And that isn't, you know, an expectation or it's not built into the program as we've conceived it. But certainly we offer this to the, the board and the community as a, as a, as a, as a trial for, for what this could look like. And we'll, together we'll be able to gauge level of interest and retention and, and quality and, and, you know, add that to the conversation. I will say too that Yiga and his wife have been longtime members of the community. Yiga, before taking this role at, at UNH, led special education in, in Portsmouth and was instrumental in bringing the Confucius Institute program there as well. So, the way the Confucius Institute is run, there's a local director and a director from China. And so Yiga is our, our local director and very much a part of our community.
So, could we have a motion to approve the implementation of this Chinese program as described in this document?
I would like to move that we accept the Oyster River Chinese program as presented with starting hopefully in January or February of this year.
Okay.
Is that okay?
For next year.
Of 2015, I'm sorry.
Okay, so maybe say the motion one more time, so.
Okay, so I, I move that we accept the Oyster, the Chinese language program as presented to us at tonight's meeting with possible start in January or February of 2015.
Okay, that's clear. Second, moved by Kenny, seconded by Al. So, further discussion?
I just wanted to say one thing and I, and I truly support this, but I, I think it, in all honesty, I think we do need to mention that Confucius Institute is coming up for renewal of five-year contract with UNH. I think we have nothing to lose by not embarking on this and we'll hope that it continues. But I think that we should all be aware and parents should be aware that, that other powers are also involved in making that decision whether Confucius Institute stays. So, just say that.
Good point, yeah. Further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of this motion, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, none opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Okay, back to the order of the agenda. Announcements, accommodations from the district?
About a year ago, I talked with the superintendent about morale at Moheramit and described it as low, uh, lower than it had been for a long time. And about last Friday, he asked us as administrators and me representing only Moheramit to describe morale at the school. And the first thing that came to mind is my morale is astronomical. It is beyond reality how good I feel about what I'm doing, who I'm doing it with. And so, as, as, as principal, I can say teachers, and I mean contracted staff as well as paraprofessionals, do a phenomenal job each day of engaging students with carefully planned lessons and activities and ensuring that they meet the social, emotional, and intellectual needs of learners with such a variety of interests and abilities. The teachers and support staff at Moheramit are fully committed to doing everything it can to make sure that the school continues to be a place that honors and respects every student while model, modeling collaboration and respect for all. It is a healthy, thriving environment. So, that was my first reaction. My morale, which is different from the staff's morale. And I also believe that that is on the upswing. And so I spent Saturday and Sunday gathering thoughts together from very different people in the school and put together a document and I'll share it with you and then leave. And certainly if you ever want to question me about any of it, I'm certainly open to that. But there are 20 things that have made, turned things around. Some of them have been ingrained for years, some of them have not. And then there are a whole list of eight different things that we've identified as things that we need to work on. And I started the paper by saying, what, uh, uh, my thoughts with what in the name of God does morale mean? So, I got, had two different definitions. I liked the first one because it's short. The confidence, enthusiasm, and discipline of a person or group at a particular time. And I would say that at this time, morale is high at Moheramit. Does that mean everyone thinks morale is high at Moheramit? No. It means after doing this exercise, that I think as a staff, morale is high. There are individual people, as you would have in any staff, who think morale is low. And I very carefully look at this definition. So, Superintendent, as I, after I presented this at the administrative meeting, asked me to come and share this with you and so I've done it, Jim. All right.
Thank you.
Here is a copy.
I'll take only one. Then the rest you can burn.
This is more than I'm good.
Hello. I actually like the way the mic is positioned. It feels much more intimate.
If you can be closer, you'll be seeing our line.
Hi, nice to see you. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention. And actually, I've mentioned this a couple of times, but I wanted to mention it because Foster's issued a correction. It was wonderful to have a front-page story about Oyster River High School, about our ranking in the Newsweek top high schools. We were 110th out of 14,454 schools ranked. Unfortunately, the math that was done by the reporter was not accurate and they said it was, we were in the top 8%. At first, I was going to just say, oh, okay, people, does that really matter? And then it showed up in an editorial, they were quoting it as a reason that, you know, related to taxes in Durham, and they quoted it in the wrong way. So I felt it was important to get it corrected. I do want to note that the story now online has been corrected. It does reflect that we were in the top 0.76% of, of high schools across America. And so I just wanted to say that Foster's did take the truth very seriously and they issued a correction and corrected. On the, on it, on that same note, I also just received, in fact, Jim shared, forwarded it to me, the Department of Ed reached out to us today to congratulate us for our, making the ranking of the AP honor roll again this year, which is, you know, a wonderful thing. It's, it's a, it's an honor roll that is determined by a combination of the number of students who are taking AP classes, but also how they score on them. And so one of the things that Oyster River has been very good at over the last couple of years is simultaneously increasing the number of participants, but also keeping our test scores high, which, which is, which is a good thing. So, we will be recognized on the DOE website here in the, in the very near future as we already were for our Newsweek ranking. And then changing the subject from rankings, I did want to mention that on December 1st at 6:30 in the auditorium, Corey Parker and I and, and a number of the athletic coaches will be doing a presentation on the athletic fields upgrade plan that we have and certainly unveiling some plans that we have for fundraising. We've invited families from, through Oyster River Youth Association, through the middle school, the elementary schools and high school, trying to get as many families to come as possible. I'd love to have the auditorium jam-packed full of people, ready to come and hear about the plan and engage in a conversation about how we can make it a reality. So, hope to see you there. Thank you.
Todd, could I just make a suggestion?
Sure.
I think there's not going to be a Durham Friday update a week from Friday, the Friday after Thanksgiving. So I think it'd be really important to get it into this Friday update.
I think that's a great idea. I will do that. Thank you.
Carrie Vaseh from Mastway. First, I'd just really like to send out a big thank you to our PTO. We have a relatively new board this year and they're doing a great job with really trying different ways to reach out to folks and to hold some of our, our events that we've had historically at Mastway. Two of the things that, that have been really exciting is, one is we've had an online ability for folks to order Mastway wear with our updated logos. And I really appreciated Amy Sterndahl, actually, one of our parents took the charge on that. And she, we touched base with Corey Parker, asked how the high school has managed their things, really shared resources, and set up an online ordering form. So that is open to families until the end of November. So if you're interested in ordering, the, the board really worked hard to make sure, we had things in a, a full range of prices, so things were not so costly for everyone, but yet you could still show your school spirit. In addition to that, historically, we've had a holiday shopping event at the school. It's been hard to really organize all of that and a lot has shifted to online. So this year, we're giving it a shot to try an online marketplace. We have sent out, we have a number of local vendors that are offering their materials and services for purchase. A percentage of the purchases goes back to the school. So, we have, I know the PTO has a Facebook page and they put out the links that way. I've sent out all of the links as well through our communication through the school. So if you happen to find that or if you need that and you're interested in doing some online shopping from your couch on these cold nights, we'd love to have you experience that. We're trying it, we're hoping it's successful and I know a lot of our, our parents have put a lot of effort into that as well. I'd also like to send out a thank you to the Mastway staff. Everyone has been doing such a great job this fall. It's been amazing. I think this morning was really a, a visual to that for me. We had a staff meeting as we usually have planned and it wasn't just me in front of the staff, but it was really a collaboration between a whole group of teachers that came together and really wanted to have discussion and gather input from each other and really work on. Our goal was really to outline ways that we could highlight our theme of bobcat kindness this year. So, we came up with some great information, we heard from all voices and it was just a very good feeling. So I appreciate everyone being open to that and we look forward to more collaboration and we look forward to sharing with you ways that we're going to be showing our bobcat kindness throughout the year. Thanks.
Thank you, Carrie.
Florist Demarest, nutrition program. My first year here, actually, 2012, something moved, 212, 212 and 213, 2013, we worked together with the two elementary school staffs, the phys ed program, the nurses. And in June of 2013, we applied for two schools to the Healthier U.S. School Challenge. We applied for the bronze award. This is a voluntary certificate, certification program and it is, the USDA that puts it out and it, it includes having to improve the quality of the food served, serving a much higher quality of food and a larger variety of fruits and vegetables, whole grains. And also, the schools must meet the minimum amount of nutrition education to meet the award, which is more than what is normally there. And also physical education and opportunities for physical activity. I had pretty much all but given up because it's been a long time, but this morning I received an email saying that we have been awarded the bronze award for both Mastway and Moheramit for the Healthier U.S. School Challenge. I will get more information on when we'll actually get the award. They will come from Massachusetts, it's from the regional USDA office and there'll be a celebration hopefully at each school. The school will receive a large banner saying that they're a healthier U.S. school and, and a small monetary award. So I'm very, very excited. And all the staff that have been involved, the, everyone in, in the lunchroom, the phys ed teacher, the nurse, the principal, everyone will receive an award from the USDA.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are there comments from the district? Are there board announcements and accommodations? Al?
In keeping with the foreign language theme for the evening, last night at the high school was the French and Spanish classes did their plays and I got to go to the French one and it was kind of cool because I, you know, I was four... one, and it was kind of cool, because I, you know, I was forced by my daughter to go early. So I got to watch the French, three kids first, and then the French four, and it was really amazing to see the progression that the kids made. It's just really a cool opportunity for the kids to actually speak the language, rather than just sit there and write vocabulary. So it was really neat.
Okay. Other announcements, accommodations? Okay, district reports. Assistant Superintendent, Carolyn?
Good evening. I just wanted to give the board an update. I have added to your folders, and we recently updated our subscription to Survey Monkey. It's the way in which we collect feedback, anonymous feedback from staff on different events that occur throughout the district. In your packet, you'll see that there are two surveys on mathematics with feedback on Professor Mahesh Sharma. There were two different events that staff have attended, one in the summer, August 4 through 8, and one this fall, a short meeting on September 25. Also, in your packet, you'll see for survey data and feedback from staff, there's the elementary discussion and exploration with Atlas. There's also feedback from Amanda Ripley on that event as well. So you will see that we sent this out to all staff in its entirety with comments, as well as the data displays, and you've received the same information that all staff have received in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to bring the board up to speed, a lot of work is going on in the district in relation to the goals that you established at the beginning of the school year. Just a very quick update, the full-day kindergarten committee is meeting with the goal of having a report done by February. It's a very engaged group of people, very committed, and I want to particularly commend Carrie for being my right-hand person as we go through this, largely because there are times where my commitments interfere with being able to do some of the committee work, and Carrie's been awesome in supporting me in the leadership of that work. So I wanted to make sure the board knew that. In addition, we had our first middle school facilities meeting last night. Jay did an awesome job of organizing it, including feeding people at 5 o'clock and setting up the agenda. He and Bill did a nice job. We had great representation by staff, and we even had a select person from the town of Lee, Carol. And we invited Steve Blatt, who did the work on the Moheramet project, and he is actually going to be in the middle school with his fellow architect for the next three weeks, off and on interviewing staff. Because remember, the purpose of this year is to focus in on the academic viability of that building vis-à-vis the middle school program. So in order for Steve to get a handle on that issue, he literally be spending time meeting with each of the grade levels, fifth, sixth, seventh grade teachers in teams. He'll be meeting with the directors of food service facilities and so forth. He'll be meeting with Jay and Bill from the administrative perspective, measuring rooms, getting a sense from teachers what it is that they do in those rooms, as he said, looking for the idiosyncrasies of the building, and we know there are a few. But he said some of those idiosyncrasies are great. For example, we were sitting in, you know, a very large gorgeous library. So there's an idiosyncrasy that you wouldn't necessarily see in a brand-new school. On the other hand, we also know some of the idiosyncrasies of the building are less conducive to learning, like the size of the fifth-grade classrooms being substandard. So the goal, as we outlined it at the beginning of the year, is that we would have a report back to the board on the academic viability, because remember, we already have a facilities viability that was done in 2011, so this is a complement to that work. We'll have that report to you in May. So those two issues are, you know, pretty big issues and right off the list of goals that you set for the school year. So engagement with the staff is really high, and I couldn't have been more pleased with the work that Jay did organizing that meeting last night. So those are the two big issues that I wanted to make sure the board was aware of tonight. And I also wanted to make sure that you knew that we're still working on the elementary strategic plan goals, the activities and measurements of those goals. We're meeting with that committee tomorrow afternoon, and we'll continue to refine that and get that work back to you post haste. So.
Great. Business administrator? No. Okay. And Megan couldn't be here tonight, so she will give her a report next, the next meeting. So I think we're up for, Lisa. Thank you for coming.
Well, I'm Lisa Allison. I chair the Long Range Planning Committee of the school board, and this is probably the first time I've ever made this report in November. So I'm very proud of the committee, all the members here, and possibly some new pending members coming on, because it is truly, I make the report, but it is a group effort. The goals of the Long Range Planning Committee are very limited. We provide the scoreboard with enrollment projections 10 years forward every year. We try to do this in the fall so that they can be used in budgeting purposes. And I'm also proud of the fact that we got the elementary enrollment projections done several weeks ago and sent them to the principals, so that they really could use them in budgeting. And of course, we're always working to continually improve and refine the model, and I'll talk about some of the things we're doing later on. Last year, of course, you'll remember that we were quite surprised by a jump in enrollment. This year, I'm happy to say that we were not surprised. We had a very small increase in enrollment, and we are continuing to see the overall trend that we have been projecting for a while now. Over the last, and that is one of decline, we have declined by 385 students over the last 14 years. The projection 10 years from now excluding tuition students is 1,647, which will be a decline over the next 10 years of 361. So the decline is continuing. We should also look at the high school with tuition students, and if we hit the 125, which we're not projecting, we will, that number, 1,647 in total, will be 1,772. We're projecting with tuition, 1,743 10 years from now. Now, how do we do this? A lot of you have heard this many times, but for kindergarten in grade one, we use a multiple linear regression based on historical births and enrollment trends. For grades 2 to 12, we use something called a grade progression ratio, which I will explain. What we do is we calculate the grade progression ratios for each grade for each of the last five years, and take the average of that for each grade, and apply that progression ratio to actual and predicted enrollments to get the next year. The grade progression ratios take into account move-ins and move-outs. This is how they work. Not to get into the algebra. If you started with, I see too much of that with an eighth grader. If you start with 200 students in, for example, the fifth grade, last October, and 10 new students came into that group this year in the sixth grade, but five of those original 200 left over the summer, you have then 205 this year in sixth grade. The grade progression ratio is simply 205 divided by 200, or 1.025. And that's how they work. That's how they take into account move-ins and move-outs. More families are moving in than moving out, more families with children are moving in than moving out. And as a result, all our GPRs are over 1, except for high school, and high school is a lot over 1 because it has tuition students coming in. But in the past, when we didn't have tuition students, we would have actually a drop from eighth to ninth, because some students go to private school for high school. We also now, for the last five years or so, have been projecting an elementary school split between Mastway and Moheramet. We use historical, well, first of all, we cannot get birth data by town, and certainly not by address, which we would need to accurately use birth data geographically to project between the two schools. So instead, we use the historical ratio of the split to get the projections for kindergarten and first grade. And then we use grade progression ratios, which are different for the two schools. They're higher at Moheramet and lower at Mastway, which is because there are more families moving in with children to Madbury, and the other towns are more stable. Future housing changes and redistricting, well, this does, in a way, account for the redistricting that we have done, especially since it is being grandfathered. So we don't think that there's anything more we can do to project that split, given the change that was made. And it certainly does not reflect any housing changes. If a huge development goes in with many families moving in, our model is not set up at the current time to take that into account. We attach, well, when you're projecting numbers far into the future, you want to know how much of a range you should consider, because obviously, you can't accurately project with certainty a specific number. So you want to know plus and minus about what percent or what number should you consider would be realistic. And what we do to give a range is to take 20 years of forecasts, and this means going back 20 years and looking for what we forecasted would happen the next year, and two years out, and three years out, and four years out. And then we look at 19 years ago, one year out, two years out, et cetera. And to each of these, we compare the actual for the year that was being projected. We subtract that, and we add up all these differences, absolute values, and divide by the number of observations. So we get what we call the average percentage difference for each forecast horizon. Now, as you would expect, the closer in forecasts are, have a tighter range than the 10-year-out forecast. And you can see that on the next chart, we have the projections, that far-right column shows the average absolute error of estimate percentage, which is a plus or minus, so the range is adding and subtracting that. You can see that right now, in total, we have 2,095 students, that includes 87 tuition, and the numbers pretty much decline, I mean, I think the next two years are almost the same, but they do decline from there, and they continue to decline down to the 1,743 that we had projected to now. In the elementary schools, you see the big difference in size between the two schools. Mastway is at 286 this year, Moheramet at 411. Moheramet stays there next year, while Mastway declines, and then they both start declining. And we reach a low of elementary school students of 510 in 2021. Then they start going back up, and that's kind of comforting, because when you see something that just keeps going down and down and down, you wonder if it could possibly be true. But we do see this bottoming out and coming back. So nevertheless, there's a pretty substantial decline over the 10 years. Now, this year, I've added, Wendy brought something to my attention about a month ago that I didn't ever detail in the report, the individual grades of middle school. So here they are. I'm sorry Jay isn't here to see that I've added.
Great job.
So poor Jay actually sees a pretty big increase of 20 children next year. But even there, it does start to drop, and toward the end of the projection period, you're down to 470, the drop of 200. Got the tuition students before the total, but this is our projection of tuition students. This is probably the one thing in the report that the committee feels less than confident about. The reason is the methodology for tuition student calculations, and that is the one thing that we, as a committee, are planning on working on next year. What we currently do, and we have been doing this for the last five or so years when there have been tuition students and significant numbers, is to run the whole model, taking out all tuition students. Then we run the whole model with tuition students and subtract the two. This is the result of that subtraction. What we would like to do is to find some independent variables, such as the number of students in Barrington, and try and make a model of a linear regression that can actually project this with a little more, I wouldn't say confidence, because we've been projecting pretty closely to the actual, but as Barrington students start using this and feeling comfortable that the agreement is in place, and they know that if they start here, they'll be able to finish, as families start to have their siblings come in and want to go to the same high school, we think that it's likely that we'll get to 125, and we're not projecting that, and possibly even more than 125. So what we are thinking is that our grade progression ratios reflect that uncertainty that was there a couple of years ago, when some of these families were making these decisions, and that now that that uncertainty is removed, that the numbers will probably be higher than this. And this is the high school enrollment from the district. This is essentially the projection of high school enrollment without the tuition students, which, as I explained, is a separate model. Looking at these two together, you see that the two lines, the total, the purple line and the green line, is just the district students, the difference between the two being the tuition students. There's a reason that those two lines move in tandem, and that is that they're all based on the on the cohort of eighth graders, seventh graders, sixth graders that will be moving through. So since there is no separate model for the Barrington students, really, they have to, just because of our methodology, they're moving in tandem, and we don't think that's necessarily correct because the number of tuition students could grow, even when we have a small cohort. This is some of the history of the enrollment in the district from 1972 to the projected 2024. You can basically see the baby boom moving through, the baby boom echo moving through, and then the little bit of a blip at the end as, at least in the elementary grades, you start to see those elementary schools growing again. This graph shows the baseline projection, plus and minus the average error. Now, this doesn't look like the prior graph because it starts in 1980, not 1972. But what it does is to, the pink line adds the average error to the baseline, and the yellow line subtracts it. So you can see what the true range would be. Interestingly, in some of the past years, the plus-average error line actually increased, but you can see now that the plus-average error line is also decreasing. So why are we projecting a decline in enrollment? The big reason is that the decline in the adult of childbearing age is, it has been dramatic, and it is continuing. New Hampshire has a very low birth rate anyway. New England has the lowest regional birth rate in the country. And guess what? Births have declined. In 2002, we had 130 births in the cohort. Now, this is by cohort. We mean children born from October 1st to September 30th. So they would be the ones who would make it into that kindergarten class or that first grade class based on their birth date alone. So in 2002, there were 130 children born. In 2012, there were 69. So it's not surprising that we're starting to see small kindergarten classes, small first grade classes, and we're expecting to see those small classes march through all the grades. Of course, this bounds is around. We got up to 82 last year, but this year, we're back down to 72. So part of the little bit of increase you see at the end of the projections is that little increase from 69 on up. So hopefully, we'll start to see a little growth there. And that's why the elementary enrollment grows at the end of the projection period. So in summary, the enrollment is projected to remain over 2,000 for three more years, and this includes tuition, then decline to 1,743 in 2025, which would be 1772 if we had the 125 tuition students. But even so, a decline of about 350 students over 10 years. The number of elementary school students will decrease with elementary enrollment dropping from 697 now to 510 in 2021, and then rebounding to 566 in 2425. Middle school enrollment is 679. We're expecting another 20 students next year. And then largely, of course, that occurs not because there's going to be 20 students moving in, but because we have a small, relatively small eighth grade class moving to high school and a relatively large fourth grade class moving to fifth grade. That's what causes that. But after that 20, it'll be downhill from there, Jay, so don't worry about that.
Totally depressing.
High school enrollment, and again, this is where we really have to fine tune our tuition student projections. We're now at 719. We get up to 819 in 2020, and then back down to 709 in 2425, which would be 737 if we had 125 tuition students. And without tuition students, the high school enrollment just from the native population is 632 now, would rise to 691 in 1920, and then decline to the current level in 2324, and it gets all the way down to 612 in 2425. So there's the report. Are there any questions?
I have a question, actually. Jimmy got.
Wait a minute, this is Lisa's report.
That's Lisa's thing. All these contracts have begun to just completely merge in my brain. I can't remember details anymore, but when I think of the Barrington tuition one, they had to guarantee a certain amount, right? Was it 90%? So when I do the math, 90% of 125 is 115. And when you look at your projections here, you have them below, I mean, Barrington would have to pay for kids not coming here, so that seems really unlikely, that Barrington would send us money for like.
We know that, Alice.
Six good, yeah. It's like, there's something really wrong there.
We'd also like to get a copy of that contract, and maybe we can just put in a floor.
So I was suggesting, Lisa.
So, and we can do that. But we, this year, had to go with really the methodology we had in place, and I'm pointing out right here that it's got a floor, and I'm telling you what the numbers would be without that floor. Hopefully, it could even be more than 125.
Just a comment. I think it's wonderful that you do this, and I believe everything you say. I just don't understand it.
Don't understand it.
But as a person who thinks a lot about climate change and the future and stuff like that, wondering, but the scientists telling us that the storms are getting worse in the south and the groundwater and all that, are there brains out there that are looking at changes, predicting changes in migration patterns? So all of a sudden, not being based on historical data, but on, you know, the doomsday predictions that we keep hearing, everybody's going to move to Durham.
Well, I think if, seriously, the nice thing about doing this every year is that every year, we look at the model and see if we need to redo, every year, we really redo the coefficients. We've got Michael Goldberg, who's professor of economics, and every year, he looks at the independent variables and gets the best fit, the most well-behaved error, he would say. And so we have a chance, if anything like that happens, we'll have years while homes are being constructed, and we'll know this, and we'll be able to gather data, and we'll be able to, that will be the least of your problems.
Lisa, if I could just, I really appreciate the work you put into it as well, because it's really become a working document for me as a superintendent, and I use it, as you know, faithfully and dog ear it and so forth. I wanted to thank you very much for doing it as early as you did this year because it allowed us to use those numbers in the budget development.
Good, well, that was our goal all along.
It was wonderful.
It was great to get those October 1 numbers fairly quickly, too, and that really helped.
I thank you also for all that hard work that you do and the rest of your committee. I just had a question about looking at numbers and even just focusing on kindergarten. And there's obviously this downward blip that's really moving through, and perhaps maybe 2017, 2018, and those are kids maybe born in 2012. So that's even on the ground at this point. So you're kind of using those births to kind of predict that. And I hear what you're saying, long-term art decline. As I look at the two columns of kindergarten, the Massway and Moheramet, they both go through that dip, and then they both start to recover. And I realize that's all theoretical. There's, nobody's being born yet to justify that. But does that mean that beyond your 10-year prediction, that we should start seeing an increase in our enrollment as our kindergartens are starting to recreate what we're seeing in, what we saw in 2013 and now in 2014?
Yes, well, you do start to see the elementary, I mean, you can really see it on that chart because we bottomed out in 2021, and it starts to grow again as those slightly larger cohorts move through. So yes, and this is typically what you see in populations anyway, because you have a bulge, and then you have their children being less of a bulge, and then now you've got, you know, probably baby boomer grandchildren or the kids we're talking about here. And so, yes, it does go back up. Will it ever get back up to the days when you have baby boomers and children in kindergarten? Probably, probably not. I mean, this district was different because you didn't have a housing back then, but you do see that going back up.
One implication I see is that if you have the, one of the more shocking parts of this chart is the decline in the middle school of 200 students, if this is right, and what the implications for hiring, or whether, you know, you're going to have teachers shifting from the middle school to the high school, you know, because the high school enrollment is going to stay the same as positions become open. But, you know, you're not, to have the same staff now for 200 fewer students, that's not, that's not going to work. So you're going to have to, either it's hiring or shifting, it seems to be there's going to have to be that kind of calculation taking place.
This is exactly why this work is so important, because it allows the board and the administration to make those adjustments as we go through time rather than being surprised by them.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think, short term, you'll have growth at the high school while you're dropping at the middle school. There'll be a few years of that as these big cohorts leave the middle school and get up to the high school. But over the 10 years, you're losing 350 kids.
Yeah.
200 of them at the middle school.
Yeah, yeah.
Of course, in the last few years, you've gained quite a few kids at the middle school.
Any questions? Thank you so much, Lisa, for this work.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we move down to discussion items, and we could add here, there's, we're going to add two members to the Long Range Planning Committee. So Denise, do you want to mention who those might be?
Yes, wonderfully. We, after having, I guess, quite a few years of having fewer Madbury residents on the Long Range Planning Committee than were actually, you know, allowed, we had some residents come forward. And so one of them, Marie, and I apologize not pronouncing her name correctly, but Knights O'Neil, came and attended our last Long Range Planning Committee. And she is, her background is, she manages a data group at a consulting firm, and she, although not a statistician herself, she works with statisticians and actuaries every day. She recently moved to the district, actually about three months ago. It was kind of interesting to hear her tale of, they had lived all over the country and decided to settle in Durham, so, and she has young children. So anyway, so she came to our last meeting, and we would like to move that she be, I guess, elected or whatever. I guess we have to vote on her being on the committee. And then the other person is Rob McEwen, who was not able to come to the last meeting. However, he has a long history of service in the district, was on the ABC Committee and so on and so forth, and is now expressing interest in being on the Long Range Committee, and definitely would add to the group with his background as well.
Very good with figures.
Exactly, yes. Yes, so I would like to make a motion, I guess, I need to make a motion.
Make a motion and that these two be, you know, chosen for the Long Range Planning Committee, yeah?
Yep, so I'd like to make a motion that Marie Knights O'Neil and Rob McEwen be added to the Long Range Planning Committee.
Okay, moved by Denise. Al?
Second.
Seconded by Al.
Was Marie's children added to your projections?
Yeah, October 1 numbers, yeah.
Sure, there's some progression that calculates that. So, discussion? Hey, all those in favor of adding these two to the Long Range Planning Committee? Seven in favor, none opposed, okay.
Do we know why she moved here? Was it because of climate change?
It's our wonderful reputation.
She started opening on the Long Range Planning.
Interestingly, she, interestingly, she said that they actually had a very hard time finding a house because there weren't that many houses on the market. So for people out there thinking about selling their house, she did, though. She said that they had decided that this is where they wanted to live, and then they came and to look for some houses, and there actually weren't very many houses on the market, so.
Interesting.
Yeah.
So to move to the draft, we have kind of a draft of the warrant articles as they're, you know, may appear. I'm not sure what action we should be taking on this.
This is here to give you sort of the first read, if you compare it to our policy procedures, is to give you a sense of orientation to what the warrant article will look like when we get to the December meeting, give you an opportunity to see how it's structured. You might recall that last year, we kind of got caught in a fumble and bumble in the warrant towards the end, and we were kind of tripping over what we're supposed to be doing, what we're not supposed to be doing. So I just wanted to make sure that you got a preview of coming attractions, so to speak, and give you an opportunity to ask either Sue or I questions about the structure of the warrants, if you have any tonight. But the real reason it's here is to give you a sense of what you'll see at the December meeting. So Sue and I could answer questions.
I have a question. This is not surprising about the track. My memory, and I could be wrong, is that often when you have a bond, there's an indication of the term of the bond. This says, you know, I think that we are going to determine the term. Now, I'm just wondering whether it's wiser to do it that way, or whether we should say this is a 10-year, so people can kind of know what they're getting into.
Yeah, I can check with you, with the attorneys, and see if we can put that in there. You would certainly disclose that when you have your public hearing, but you haven't really decided that yet either.
Oh, so this is just because we haven't decided.
You haven't decided.
Okay, so with the idea that that would go in, we will decide whether it's 10, 15, whatever, and then now, okay, but it won't appear like this.
Got those infamous Xs in there.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Those are kisses.
No, I got a question. Okay, Al?
So there's one, you know, hanging out, and I know we're looking at these as just like a rough draft, but.
They're not so rough, Al, they're kind of refined.
Yeah, I mean, it's, other than like a couple of things like Tom was talking, but there's, hanging out there is the LGC money.
Yeah.
What about that?
Well, that's the discussion that, you know, we will be having with you when we hit December. It's also, it's part of the conversation we would be having related to a number of conversations we've had during budget development process, related to how you might want to use those monies. And also, part of that conversation will be about the early retirement incentive and how to use that money. So that's a conversation that you'll have in a very rich way when we hit December because we need guidance from you in terms of that, and Sue will be prepared for that as well. Sue, did you want to add anything?
Well, I just wanted to say, I could, in fact, in the next draft, put that on there, and you can.
See what it looks like.
See what it looks like. Should have, probably, I just forgot that, so I can do that.
Are there comments about the warrant articles?
Just a question. The concerns that I run into is still the artificial turf part of this. And when, when and where is that disclosed to the public that that's part of? So that we don't get in to the, well, the public has voted on the money, but we can do what we want with it.
Well, we could always have a description below the warrant as to what, I mean, the bond, what the bond is about. Wouldn't be embedded in the warrant, but we could have descriptions.
Yeah, but you have to be real careful about that. And, but obviously at your public hearing, you have your forums.
All the forums, such and such.
Yeah. Deliberative session, but it is difficult to, and not suggested that you put too much in there because it has to be very factual, yet be,
Right, but we put descriptions in last year.
We did, we did. But we're always cautioned about that, so we certainly can put something in there.
But having then passed the bond, how much authority do we have to change the project and to whatever?
Well, it depends on how specific the warrant article is. I mean, this warrant article would give you complete, complete freedom to spend it on the intent, which is the reorganization of the athletic fields.
With or without artificial turf?
With or without, but the intent is with. And that's what Todd will be going out into the community and, and having public forums on. If you do it without, really, there's no reason to do the bond. Because without the artificial turf, the advantages that Todd and Corey have given the board disappear. The fatigue on the field still exists, the limitation of the field still exists. So, you know, the heart and soul of this is not just the track, but also the artificial turf.
This is cheating, this is like going over my committee report. But we talked about this actually in Communications and one of the ideas was to reach out to UNH because they've been using artificial fields for a long time. And so they are really knowledgeable about the health impacts and they've purchased products. And I thought they'd be really helpful talking to us about the impact of artificial turf. So that would give us,
That would be good, yeah.
some knowledgeable, I mean, rather than just other articles, somebody who has real practical experience. I think that will be, and, and that was part of the presentation that would go forward. So it wouldn't be, you know, we'll be sending that out in Friday updates and ORYA and Fosters and everything else. So that the, it, it won't be hidden that we're using artificial turf.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that's what I'm hearing your concern is, is that how do we, how do we make it clear to people? And I guess I'm going along with what Dr. Morris says about the idea that, you know, maybe you put in here for the renovation and construction of athletic fields as discussed in, I mean, I don't know, but it,
We'll work with our attorneys because I think this is one that we do want to have a factual description below that reinforces all the public forums and conversations. Because this is pretty straightforward, the facts is, the facts are, we're going, if this passes, we're gonna reorganize the athletic fields, baseball and softball. We're going to put in a track and we're going to install an artificial turf field. It seems pretty straightforward, Sue, that we could probably get guidance from our attorneys to make sure that's crystal clear below the warrant so the people know what it is they're voting on.
This article actually came from them.
From the attorneys?
Yeah.
So now we go back and say, because this is the issue we ran into. This is the issue we ran into last year.
It is.
You might recall, those of you who are on the board, we got the attorney's guidance this early in the process. And then very late in the process, the attorney said to us, oh, yeah, we should have told you that. Well, we're trying to make sure we don't get to that place this time, that our attorneys understand what it is we want and that we craft the warrant articles and descriptors accordingly.
Kenny?
And just as far as getting information out, kind of the sample ballot is made available to people ahead of time and probably will be up on the district website, I assume. It's very easy to, to put a link for a full description of the project.
Absolutely.
And you got that hyperlink and, and it's all detailed out.
Yeah, I think it goes back to Al, Al's, in, in, in the Communications Committee, you know, when we discussed this, we talked about this in depth. It was the only discussion we had about how we're going to communicate this project. Corey was there and we have multiple ways we're reaching out. We're not just relying on the deliberative session. There's the forums, we're using ROTV, we're using Fosters, we're using the newsletters at the elementary schools. You know, we will use every vehicle at our disposal to make sure that when the voting public comes into deliberative session, they know it is, what this warrant's about. We'll, we'll bend over backwards to try to make sure it's crystal clear because the last thing we want is anybody to not understand what it is they're voting on.
Denise?
And I, I know I mentioned this before, but having like a Q and A, you know, what is the advantage of using artificial turf over, you know, that kind of thing, I think is helpful to people who are trying to understand.
And that was on our list of things, also FAQ on the website, front and center. So people, all of those questions, the environmental questions, the finance questions, the advantages questions, the student participation numbers, all of that was discussed in Communications. So you'll, perhaps, maybe on this issue, we could just do a, a communications report, Al, from, from Corey and Todd's perspective.
Yeah.
That'd be okay?
Sure.
The next meeting, so you guys get a full scope of how we're trying to communicate this because I think that's a really,
Yeah, you guys will have done your public forum already, so you can come back and give kind of,
Brochure, the brochures. And the brochure that Corey and Todd are developing right now, the reason we have, we are, we are pressuring that particular piece of communication is because of all of the concerts and Christmas vehicles that we have in the next four weeks, we could actually have the brochures in, in those events. So and somebody goes to a music concert at the high school, the middle school, the elementary school, the brochure will be there. The idea is just to, you know, canvas. And, and we also had an incre, a good conversation about what we can and can't do. We can't advocate a yes or vote on it, all we can do is inform and educate. So the, the issue is raise the level of conversation. And the other thing that we asked Corey and Todd to do is build a network of, of people in the three communities who are supportive. So it's not always coming to Corey. If they know the neighbor is, is a person from Lee or Madbury or Durham and they're involved in four, they're involved in this project, there's a network of people who can have consistent communication about what it is we're attempting to do. So it was a pretty involved conversation.
Other comments about the warrant articles?
Just a question. To get the three-fifth, the vote obviously is,
Huge.
Huge obstacle. So I was just wondering if, you know, if there are any other warrant articles on the municipal sites in Durham. Because I know Lee has a library coming up, so that's another $2 million.
You know, we, we don't know that for sure and that's a conversation we can have with the town administrators and, and elected bodies.
So that's tough to go up against and,
We'll follow up on that, it's a great suggestion, Mar.
Questions, comments on this? On the superintendent's evaluation, this, maybe, maybe you have some more to say about this, Jim. But what I thought was, on December seventeenth, that's two meetings from now, we'd have a non-public session in which Jim would present us with his self-evaluation. And we would also have, he's also conducting, I think to his great credit, a survey of staff and personnel in the district who are going to give feedback on his performance. And he'll be presenting that also, is that right at that?
Yeah, what I've done is they've taken the exact same vehicle that you as board members use annually to evaluate my performance. I've added a Likert's scale of one to four. One exceeds, two meets, three does not meet, four, I don't know. The reason I put I don't know is because, for example, the first section of that tool that you, you use says relationship with the school board. If you're a, you know, teacher or a paraprofessional or a custodian, you may not be able to answer that effectively, so you can just put a four and be done with it. But the other sections would be based on exposure to me in terms of various parts of my job that I do with various constituencies in the district. I just thought it would be nice periodically to engage the staff in getting a sense of how they think I'm doing. And, you know, basically, my closing line in my cover memo was to help me be the best superintendent I can be for Oyster River. Really, that's what evaluations are about, it's about growth. And that's what I'm hoping to get. You know, there's four hundred employees in the district. I really am trying to reach out to not just the teachers, but the pairs, the custodians, you know, the food service workers, you know, because I'm the superintendent of four hundred employees, not just, you know, the teaching staff. So, you know, I'm looking forward to getting that feedback. It's out now and I told them that they had until we break at Thanksgiving. So they'll have it for a week and those people who can find the time to do it, I greatly appreciate. And those people who can't because of the holidays, I understand.
So there'll be some, a process of several meetings where, at least in the past, we've done, we could, you know, do that same thing where we would have then a meeting where we, we might take the categories and just have an open discussion about all those categories, assigning someone the responsibility, who draws, the person who draws the short straw. Well then, someone will, will write, write a draft and then bring that back and we will then revise that draft. And, and then, then once that's approved, that will be presented to the, to the superintendent. So there'll be a set of, probably a series of non-public meetings as we move through that process. At least that's what we've done in the past, we can change that. But, but the, the first, the first day will be the December seventeenth when he'll be presenting us with that information. Okay?
Sarah has a question.
Sure, yeah.
I don't know how it was, how it laid out previously,
Yeah.
in previous years. But can, can we make sure that we, we as this sitting board finish Jim's evaluation before the new board comes on? Because I know last year, I think my first meeting, I came, or my second meeting, I came in and it was the, the wrapping up of that. And it was hard because I hadn't been a part of that whole process. So I, I just think,
Yeah, I think we're starting earlier, I, I don't, I don't see a problem with that. And the worst comes to worst, if we had to have an extra meeting to, to finish it, you know, we'd do it, right? So, because I think it's, it's, you know, to have some new person come on and having to sign off on something they've not been part of doesn't make any sense. So we'll get, we'll get it done before the new board is convened. Yeah. So we have the, the 2015, 2016 calendar.
Yeah.
Could I have a motion to approve that? Then we, Al?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2015, 2016 school calendar.
Moved by Al, is her second? Seconded by Kenny, are there questions, discussions?
If I could just go into a brief discussion before you get into your part of the discussion. At the last meeting, you know, Carolyn shared with you in my absence that we had coordinated our calendar efforts with both Dover and Somersworth. And the reason that we do that is that we have high school students that go to both of the technical schools. Concurrently, as you were asking for consideration in terms of changes, Dover and Somersworth were doing the same thing. And I think that they were, all preschool systems would be dealing with the exact same issue, which was coming back to a full week of school. So we updated our draft vis a vis the superintendent's. And what we are proposing is that we adjust that five-day school week to a three-day school week. And that by doing so, we still maintain coordination. Now, I would tell you that Dover and Somersworth aren't exactly coordinated. They're one day off on that Friday. So we chose to go the Friday since we were going to start in the middle of the week, which is absolutely what we've done in the past. We adjusted the end date and we included the snow days. So the reason we include the snow days is that it allows parents to say, okay, well, if nothing happened, the last day of school would be, but is that really likely? And unlikely as it is, so we decided to put them in and be very bold about it this year. Largely because so often we get into that situation at the end of the school year and, and people are checking out and really, school isn't over yet. So we're trying to project more boldly when those snow, what would happen if the snow days are used. I also would say that I met with guild leadership, they reviewed these changes and they were in concurrence that this is the best version of the calendar that we would like you to consider adopting this evening. So again, sort of like Lisa Allison, we're trying to get things done early enough so parents can be informed well in advance so they can plan accordingly. So based on my conversations with Carolyn, based on my conversations with guild leadership, based on my conversations with Dover and Somersworth, we would recommend this calendar to you for your consideration this evening.
Al?
I had just one comment, and I don't see it on here, but it's like something to avoid, which was like the perfect storm we had this year, which was the Veterans Day. So we had a teacher workshop on Friday. Everybody came, theoretically came to school on Monday. And then they got, Tuesday was teacher workshop. So there was a,
Holiday.
tremendous, you know, resistance to going to school on Monday. And I think we should try to avoid doing it.
Well, and of course, what happens with Veterans Day, unlike most holidays, is,
Oh, it's on the eleventh.
It, it falls always on the same day. You might recall in the past, they attempted to jury-rig Veterans Day and actually did for a bit, and then they got the backlash that no, the eleventh is,
I'm just saying, we don't have any control over that, but we do have control over the teacher workshop.
Teacher workshop day.
That's completely under our control, so it's not,
Friday, create those.
Yeah, we could have had it on Monday, like a teacher workshop day on Monday would have worked better.
So that was unique to this year.
Yeah.
So it doesn't repeat itself, but you still get a day off in the middle of the week, which is never ideal.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Really?
And that's on the graduation date, that's to be determined.
Mm-hmm.
I was told last night at the meeting that it's set in stone for,
Todd, have you set the graduation date?
To be very clear, no, the graduation date will not be set until March, when I come to you to,
And the reason it won't be set until March?
Is because we have to meet the minimum requirement of the number of attendance days for our seniors as well as our underclassmen. And so, I mean, assuming no more than five snow days, the twelfth is a likely date. But I can't, I can't confirm that until March when we know how many days we've missed.
You'll never confirm nor deny when graduated.
That sounds like a fun major opportunity though for the tracks, a gas graduation day.
You might recall two years, you might recall two calendars years ago that Todd made it, well, it appeared it was made in stone in the calendar, even though Todd didn't intend it that way. And when he had to adjust it due to snow days, we got tremendous,
Do you remember that, Todd?
I continue to hear about that.
Yeah.
Three years later.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the calendar, the proposed calendar as a further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, none opposed, calendar's approved. So we adopted the calendar, going down to the board actions. Motion to approve tuition rates for elementary schools at fifteen thousand eight hundred forty-four elementary, sixteen thousand three hundred seventy-eight for middle school and high school at seventeen thousand three hundred thirty-five. I assume, Sue, this is something you figured out, right? Okay. Al?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the tuition rates.
That's specified here?
Yeah, specify.
Yeah.
No, second.
Second, moved by Al, seconded by Denise. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, none opposed, the rates are approved. We've already made, we've already approved the paraprofessional and support staff negotiated agreement. Could I have a motion to approve the nomination for Oyster River Middle School activity stipends? Al?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the nomination of Oyster River Middle School activity stipends.
Moved by Al, seconded by Kenny. Discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, none opposed, the stipends are approved. Motion to approve Oyster River High School, Oyster River Middle School Winter Volunteer and Coach nominations. Kenny?
I make a motion to approve the Oyster River High School and Oyster River Middle School Winter Volunteer and Coach nominations.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Denise. Discussion, all those in favor, please raise your hand, seven in favor, none opposed. your hand. Seven in favor, none opposed. Motion to approve the list of policies. Denise?
All right, get the list here. Wait a minute. Yeah, they're not listed.
Denise, right here. Let me read them.
Oh, they're on there. Okay, yeah. All right. My motion to approve IFA instructional needs of students, IGAD career education, IGD curriculum adoption, and IF instructional program. This is for second read and adoption.
Moved by Denise to approve these policies as a block.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Maria. Discussion? Hearing, I'm sorry, sorry.
On IGAD, I, I like it, but I guess I, I would just question bullet point two, as
far as career exploration should begin in the middle school, should be provided with information about careers and some firsthand experience in the world of work, observation of work, actual work experiences. What are we talking about there?
Well, we can bring Jay up. Jay, do you want, is he still hiding back there?
He is. Got him. IGAD. So I got it at the elementary school because it's very abstract. We're not saying we're going to put the kids at the, you know, out for actual work experiences. I get it at the high school level because you actually are putting them out on actual work experiences. I say, how do we do that with our middle schoolers?
Often, we bring in guest speakers from UNH to talk about various professions, like women in science clubs who go over and visit a variety of different professors. You know, with our new STEM program, we bring in experts from engineering, our sea bridge project, our students working hand in hand with the naval shipyard engineers and workers on various products and designs. The thing is, things are changing, and it's, it's a good question, Sarah, because the typical, maybe careers we expose kids to, maybe 10 years ago, there's different kinds of careers. Think about computer programming. Those types of things we're doing with kids and teach them about now. We didn't have computer programming, well, we, we did 20 years ago, but it was a very different kind of job. So I think, again, it's, it's a great question.
So it's more about observe, having them observe actual work, people, not so much having actual work experiences themselves?
Right, yeah.
Okay. I'm like, okay.
We do have kids perform community service.
I thought about your community service, and I was like, well, digging holes, that Silas was good at that.
Yeah, but it's.
Okay. I got it.
Okay.
Other questions about the policies? Okay, clear of vote. All those to approve these policies as a block. Raise your hand. Seven in favor, none opposed. Okay. School board committee updates? Hearing none. Maria?
The policy committee met this afternoon, and this all has worked extremely hard.
Mm-hmm.
And well.
There it is.
And last night, I went to the 68 hours, 10 68 hours of hunger, and lots of brainstorming on fundraising opportunities, and the review of the food drive that the Rotary Club had for three days at the, at the Dura Market, raised both money and lots of food.
Terrific. Other committee updates?
Al, do you feel we, sorry, you're.
We already covered that.
Okay.
Yeah. Some public comments? No? Okay, our next meeting will be on December 3rd. The, that meeting after that will be on the 17th. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Maria. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor. Meeting's adjourned.
All right. We made a motion to adjourn.